This is the regular meeting of the Township of Tom's River Board of Adjustment and pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. The public is hereby notified that adequate notice as defined by the act was provided, and that notice of the meeting schedule was published in the Asbury Park Press on December 6, 2024, and published in the Star Letter on December 6, 2024, and a copy of said notice was filed with the Clerk of the Township of Tom's River and posted by him. We will now have roll call of members.
Mr. Christen?
Here.
Mr. Dingler?
Here.
Mr. Calucci?
Here.
Mr. Harmon?
Here.
Mr. Fontana?
Here.
Mr. Ertz not present this evening? Mr. Luthman?
Here.
Mr. Lowman?
Here.
Mr. Tattala?
Yes.
And Mr. LaFalle?
Here.
In addition, we have present tonight our Board Attorney Christopher Dasties, prior of the law firm of Dastie and Steiger, our Board Engineer Panhella P.E. of Wilmington and Vernick Engineers, our Board Planner Stuart Weiser of A.R.H. Associates, our Assistant Secretary for the Board is Melissa, Ms. Melissa Venedetto, our Court Recorder is Denise L. Sweet of Denise L. Sweet and Associates, LLC. For those of you who are here for the first time, we will briefly outline the procedure which the Board of Adjustment has adopted. Number one, the applicant or his or her attorney will present their case. Number two, the applicant may call witnesses on his or her behalf. There will be questions by board members and then questions to the witnesses by objectors relating only to the witness's testimony. This procedure will be repeated with each and every witness. When asking a question regarding a specific witness's testimony, the public may only ask questions about that expert's testimony. Upon completion of the presentation by the applicant or his or her attorney, all parties who are interested may present their views. The public may comment on any aspect of the application at the close of the public com- uh, application at the public comment period to close of the application. When speaking, please give your name and address and your interest in the application to the Board Secretary and Court Recorder and speak into the microphone. To award delay, do not repeat what any objector has already said other than to acknowledge agreement with that objector. All appeals shall be taken to the Superior Court within forty-five days of the date of publication of the decision. It is therefore very important all objectors be present tonight, um, that are present tonight be heard by the Board. The Board will complete all appeals on the agenda if at all possible prior to ten p.m. We will now proceed with the regularly scheduled meeting. All right, and five on the agenda is approval of general vouchers for payment. Uh, tonight there is one voucher twenty-five oh oh seven nineteen dash oh two, uh, for Denise L. Sweet and Associates for a total of six hundred dollars. All for it?
Second.
That is Mr. Luthman and Mr. Dingser. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, number six is approval of escrow vouchers for payment. There are three tonight. Voucher twenty-five dash zero one four eight nine for Dastie and Steiger, voucher number twenty-five zero four eight eight for Wilmington Vernick and Engineers, uh, and voucher number twenty-five dash zero one four nine zero for A.R.H. Associates. The total tonight is twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. All for it?
Second.
Um, actually, just an all in favor, right? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number seven on the agenda is the meeting of the minutes, um, Board of Adjustment meeting and minutes for the regular meeting of September twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolutions of approval. Uh, the first resolution of approval tonight is for Joseph and Donna Romano, thirty-one forty-seven Creek Road, block eleven oh eight point thirty-one, lots thirty-three, appeal number one three ninety-five, both variants approved. All for it?
Second.
That's Mr. Luthman and Mr. Dingser on the second. Roll call, please.
Um, Mr. Dingser, you left the, you left the meeting early. So you don't have, you can't vote on the resolution.
Oh, okay. Second. All right, so it's a motion by Mr. Luthman, a second by Mr. Calucci.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Tattala?
Yes.
Mr. Lowman?
Yes.
And Mr. Christen?
Yes. Second resolution of approval tonight is for Terry and Margaret Scott, thirty-one Training Way, block two thirty-five point twenty-nine, lots one, appeal number one three nine two six, both variants approved. All for it? That is Mr. Luthman on motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Fontana. Roll call, please.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Tattala?
Yes.
Mr. Lowman?
Yes.
Mr. Christen?
Yes. The resolution of approval tonight is James O'Connell, uh, thirty-eight Rico Avenue, block fifteen hundred point thirteen, lots eleven, appeal number one three nine two four, both variants approved. All for it? That is Mr. Luthman on motion. Is there a second by Mr. Fontana? Roll call, please.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Tattala?
Yes.
Mr. Lowman?
Yes.
Mr. Christen?
Yes. Uh, the fourth and final resolution of approval tonight is Christopher Markey, nineteen oh seven Route thirty-five, northbound, block ten twenty-five, lots eleven, appeal number one three nine two eight, use D-two and minor site plan approved. All for it? Mr. Luthman on motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Calucci. Roll call, please.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Tattala?
Yes.
Mr. Lowman?
Yes.
And Mr. Christen?
Yes. Uh, we have a resolution of denial tonight is for Barry and Jill Trav, thirteen six Terrace, block ten ninety-seven point zero one, lots one fourteen, appeal number one three nine two zero, use D-four F.A.R. and both variants denied. All for it?
Second.
Is Mr. Luthman on motion? A second by Mr. Fontana.
Okay, I'm only gonna call the board members who, uh, said yes to denying the application. So Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Dingser?
Yes.
And Mr. Christen?
Yes. Uh, the final resolution tonight is an amended resolution of approval for Breton Development, LLC. That's to Breton Harbors Drive, block ten eighty-five point seventeen, lots eight, appeal number one three nine one five, both variants approved. All for it? That is a motion by Mr. Luthman. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Fontana. Roll call, please.
You can just do all in favor, it's just, uh, it just puts a type of.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Uh, new board business tonight? Christchurch of Tom's River, four fifteen Washington Street, block six eighty-seven, lot sixteen. The applicant seeks use D-one variants and preliminary and final made site plan approval to construct an, a proposed nine hundred and forty-nine square for homeless shelter addition with seventeen beds connected to existing outreach office of Christ, uh, Church of Christ. The proposed homeless shelter will not, is not permitted in the R-one fifty zone. Number of parking spaces, one hundred and eighty-three parking spaces required, one hundred and fifty parking spaces proposed. Uh, Mr. York?
Thank you. The Director of Party New York, Mr. York, to represent the applicant. We, at the last meeting, Mr. Gazeroski's planner did his testimony. I was asked to commence cross-examination, and I asked that we not do it at the last meeting, because there's only five or ten minutes left. So tonight would be the cross-examination of the applicant.
Okay, connotes of what, Mr. Gazeroski? Good evening. Um, in the interest of civility and keeping a clean record, I want to remind you guys both to not talk over each other, if we could. Questions asked, and let's answer, and then we can rebuttal. Uh, so you may proceed.
Thank you very much. It's what you said, my colleague. My name is Ron. I'm the pre- on behalf of my client, Paul Ryan. Uh, at the last meeting, I didn't think that was that, Commissioner Steck, and I believe my examination of him, uh, was concluded. Uh, obviously, my colleague requested that we carry until the next meeting. Because of the length of the hour, I am here today with Mr. Steck, uh, to present the of a cross-examination by my colleague, Mr. Steck.
Mr. Steck testified previous, previously in this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
And you had an opportunity to review the M.L.U.L., the master plan, and the zoning orders?
Yes.
You also had an opportunity to review the testimony from the prior hearings?
Yes.
You reviewed all of the exhibits?
Yes.
What is the use of the property to the south and east of the church?
Um, I have to look at my map to make sure I know the south is, okay. Okay. Uh, to the, to the south and to the east?
The exhibit he's looking at was marked A-three. Have the same exhibit. So we wrote down.
To the south and the east is a golf course.
And that's the Tom's River Country Club?
Yes.
And the Tom's River Country Club contains a bar, a restaurant, a banquet facility, among other uses?
Uh, I haven't been drinking there, so I don't know exactly what they have, but I would presume that's a typical scenario for a country club.
And is that any different than a commercial use for a bar or a restaurant, say, on thirty-seven?
Uh, it is different, yes.
How is it different?
There's, uh, a lot of acreage associated with it, and, uh, that's a prime difference. Uh, you know, golf courses, if they're eighteen holes, can be, you know, two hundred acres. It's a, it's a different entity, and in my experience is usually defined differently in zoning ordinances as a commercial recreation use, not a retail use.
And the country club property has two hundred parking spaces plus shown on the site?
Uh, I can't tell how many parking spaces it adds from that.
Did you visit the site?
I visited the site, but I didn't go into the golf course, and I've never again had a drink there.
You sure?
I'm positive.
What is the extent of the border between the country club and the church? Is it an extensive border?
Uh, yes.
Is it the bulk of the church's border?
Yes.
With regard to the church's border on the west portion, that would be the border of the church on the west, which comes up to Magnolia, is that correct?
Yes.
The first property on Magnolia and Washington Street is a law office, is that correct?
I believe it's a residence with a law office.
With a law office. And then as you proceed south, there are residences?
Yes.
How many houses border the church on that side? And how far is the first residence after the law office from the proposed structure which will house the homeless?
I can object to the form of the question. This is not the proposal to house homeless. This is an application to provide a sleeping place, not the house thing.
Mr. Dasties?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a fair question. I think we've gone back and forth on semantics regarding housing and residence.
We can't hear.
Microphone, please.
I beg your pardon.
I beg your pardon. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a fair question between homelessness and, uh, housing homelessness or a place for homeless people to sleep. I think it's a fair question.
What is the distance, sir?
Would you repeat your question? The distance from what to what?
Denise, to read the question.
How far is the first residence after the law office from a proposed structure which will house the homeless?
Um, let me get a scale.
Uh, maybe, don't go away.
Uh, no, I like my scale.
Is that great, this law scale?
Looks just like mine, just.
So from the homeless shelter building, uh, to the residence on Magnolia that's not on the corner, there's, there's a residence on the corner that does have a law office. The next building is purely a residence. It, and again, this is a, uh, kind of a small scale, but it scales to about a hundred and forty feet.
Would the site handy better if you just use as a scale? Or it doesn't matter?
Uh, that would be more accurate.
So we're now referring to A-four.
So from the homeless shelter building to the closest corner of the dwelling, one inch from the corner on Magnolia, is, scales to be about a hundred and thirty-three feet.
Same question for the next house going south. And same question for the next house?
Two hundred and ninety feet.
And those are the houses or homes closest to the, we'll call it the structures, so we don't have to say that.
Uh, no, there are homes across the street that are closer than two hundred and ninety feet.
No, yeah, I think the first house you said was a hundred and thirty-eight.
Uh, you asked me how many houses are, uh, they're closer, and I'm, there are other houses other than the ones that are up the property that are closer in linear distance.
The first house is a hundred and thirty-eight feet from the structure, is that what you said?
The first house not including the corner house?
Yes.
Yes, uh, let me repeat that. It scales to about a hundred and thirty-three feet.
And the house directly across the street, you just said there were houses across the street, what does that scale?
scales to be about a hundred and fifty-five feet.
And those are the houses that appear to be closest to the structure, is that correct?
Yes.
What prop, what zone is this property located in?
It's a single-family residential zone.
Do you know the number?
Uh, I don't recall the number. I have to look at my notes. It's like an R-forty, R-fifty, I forget the number.
If I said the R-one fifty, why you look and check? I could be wrong. Uh, now, if you could.
R-one fifty is the zone.
And in the R-one fifty zone, single-family dwellings are permitted?
Yes.
Are community residents permitted?
Uh, community residents for the disabled as defined in the municipal land use law?
No. Read the statute, or the ordinance. Three forty-eight, if ten point nine, the R-one fifty zone, paragraph five, community residents for the developmentally disabled, community shelters for victims of domestic violence, community residents for the terminally ill, and community residents for persons with head injuries in adult family care homes for elderly persons and physically disabled adults. That's the ordinance, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that parallels the state law.
And that is a permitted use?
Yes.
The same ordinance, section six, says age-restricted multifamily residential development is prohibited, is permitted as well, is that correct?
Yes.
So multifamily units could be built on the property also?
Only if they're age-restricted.
So as long as they're old people, like us, they can live there?
Uh, I, I don't know if there are different standards for fifty-five and over. Usually those are large multifamily buildings, but you're correct, that's what the ordinance says.
In your testimony, you went into great detail about the need for buffering, is that correct?
Yes.
And you believe that the SECA case, among others, required that buffering in order to be provided in order to avoid detrimental impact?
Uh, what I said was, aside from the homeless shelter, buffering is required for the house of worship. And that's twenty feet. Uh, and what I'm suggesting is that the homeless shelter, I believe, in my opinion, is much more intense than a house of worship use, so it makes it more paramount, uh, that there be some protection, and there's no enhancement proposed in this application for any buffering. So it's substandard today, and it's not being improved.
And you testified somewhat length about the requirement for minimum buffering, did you not?
Yes.
It, does the SECA case provide that this board can impose conditions of a pool?
Yes.
Could this board impose a condition of a pool that would require buffering along the westerly property line?
Uh, that would be one step of the SECA, uh, process. That doesn't mean that the applicant meets the SECA test just because twenty feet buffer is provided.
That wasn't the question. The question was, can the Board of Adjustment impose a condition requiring buffering on the west side of the property?
Uh, it could. It's, it's within its authority to do that.
And in fact, does not the SECA case specifically talk about the board using that to avoid detrimental effects?
It, it, the, that's one, that's the third step in the SECA four-step process.
In your testimony, twice you made an issue of who was operating the shelter, is that correct?
Yes.
And is your opinion that because the church was not operating the shelter, or the house, or the structure, whatever we're gonna call it, I don't want to?
It's a homeless shelter. It's a class-two homeless shelter is what I understand it.
But when you testified last week, you also said that the zoning permit should not have been granted for the use of the property since the church was not taking care of the outreach center.
Uh, the way, in my opinion, as I read the permit, uh, it was kind of masked by, by, actually, you offered the language in the permit request. Uh, it said that since the church does outreach, uh, this is like an extension of the church's use, but in, in my opinion, because this is technically unrelated to the church, they happen to be on church property, but it's under, on, it is unrelated to the church. The church doesn't hire and fire, uh, the employees, et cetera, et cetera. Because of that fact, two things arise from it. Uh, number one, it is not eligible, in my opinion, to be a bona fide accessory use for the house of worship. And number two, it may well threaten the tax exemption of the church because it's unrelated to the church's use.
Now, you said because it wasn't operated by the church. In your testimony at the last hearing, you cited the Hoboken case and indicated that case doesn't apply because in that case the church operated the shelter, is that correct?
My understanding, it was in the church building, in the basement of the church itself, in the, in the facts in that case.
And in fact, you testified, quote, "but it was operated by the church itself."
Uh, that, well, what, what I understand, I don't know the exact arrangement, but I understand that that was in the basement of the church, and the court remanded it by saying, "Look, you gotta, you know, protect the health and safety of the occupants, you just can't let people stay overnight in your church basement."
So from your perspective, the fact that the church is not operating the outreach center and is not responsible for the homeless shelter, structure, whatever, that's a substantial difference?
It, it, it's for two reasons. While, uh, the proposal is to have a homeless shelter in a church building, they still have to get on and off the property and use the parking, so the, the church technically ought to be part of the presentation because your applicant can't control what happens on the rest of the church property, only the church can. But the fact that it's remote, the fact that it is not managed, uh, by the church tells me that it's not eligible to be an accessory use.
Just for the record, you're aware that the church is the applicant, is that correct?
Uh, that's on the form, but they're not testifying, and I, I, I don't know of any evidence that shows there's a lease arrangement or a whole harmless insurance. I, I don't know what the relationship is other than you saying, I, I know that the church owns the property, but there's nothing in the record, uh, that talks about some kind of contractual relationships.
But the record, the application of whom I represent, is signed by the church, isn't it?
There is a signature, I can't read who, who signed it, but there is a signature that authorizes the application, but there's no, uh, other evidence other than that.
All the testimony that has been presented, however, has been presented by the church's attorney, is that correct?
Oh, I, I don't know if, are you the church's attorney?
Yes.
Well, uh, I didn't know that, and it's, you, if my-
You didn't know, you didn't know.
If I can finish, if I can finish, is that there's no test, if, there's no testimony about the church's involvement by a witness.
Is there any testimony by anybody that's saying the church isn't involved?
Uh, I don't, well, we have raised the question about how much the church is involved because there's no church witness that has been presented and testified under oath, or there has not been a, a document presented other than the authorization to apply.
So the church signed an application, said, "Mr. York, go to the Board of Adjustment and present this application." Isn't that sufficient proof that the church is involved?
They're part of the site plan, so again, the, the applicant entity here, the, the homeless shelter, is using the rest of the property, and it seems to me that both parties are intimately involved with, with the use of this property.
Do you have any law, statute, ordinance, or case law that indicates the applicant actually has to testify at a hearing?
Uh, it's just my understanding that there are parts of this property that are not controlled by the homeless shelter operator, and it, and logic tells me that there ought to be evidence from both parties that control the site.
The representation by the church is that they're in favor of the application, and they've given up whatever property is necessary for this junket, haven't they?
I don't think it says they're in favor of the application. They authorize the, they authorize the application. They authorize the application.
Sir, you made a prior testimony. You testified in the hearing, you went into some length about St. John's. And you said, and I quote, "The Hoboken case, I guess it's St. John's, was operated in the basement of a church by the church, and that was a homeless shelter, but it was operated by the church itself." That's your testimony from last year?
Yes, that's what I recall. The important factor in my mind is that it was in the principal building of the church.
So let's go back. Your testimony that the church operated it, doesn't make any difference to you now?
It, no, it's my, I didn't memorize the case. I don't know all the facts, but I know the important facts to me were that it was operated in the principal dwelling of the basement of the church.
So your statement last time, "but it was operated by the church itself," is of no consequence?
No, if the church had, let's say, hiring, if church volunteers, for example, or church congregants were employees of the entity, that would make a difference because it makes it eligible to be an accessory use.
Well, let me read to you a part of St. John's Evangelical Lutheran Church versus Hoboken, 195 New Jersey Super 414, at page 417. And I will quote. "The facts are essentially not in dispute. Last winter, the members of the Hoboken clergy coalition, quote, 'determined that the plight of the homeless was one of the most pressing needs in our city,' close quote. Parenthesis, affidavit of Reverend Felsky, paragraph 2-4, close quote, parentheses. The coalition therefore began operating a shelter in the basement of St. John's church, supported by donations from member churches given. The shelter feeds 30 to 50 persons an evening meal and provides sleeping accommodations for them. The next morning, the people are given breakfast and, quote, 'return to the streets,' close quote." So in that case, based on that opinion, the church did not operate the shelter, and it is identical to the situation here in that affordable housing is operating the shelter with the church's consent.
From what you read, the church was a member of a coalition that operated the shelter?
Where does it say that? It didn't say that?
You read that?
No, I didn't. I never said the church was a member. I'll read it to you again. "Last winter, the members of a Hoboken clergy coalition, so forth, the coalition therefore began operating a shelter in the basement." It didn't say the church was a-
I assume, it's logical to me to assume that St. John's was a member of the coalition.
So you made an assumption, and you testified last time that there was a big difference here because in this case, the church wasn't operating the shelter. But in fact, you misrepresented what the case stood for.
I didn't know all the facts, but the important fact to me that was that that was in the basement of a church. And it would seem logical to me that if it's operated by a church coalition, St. John's, I'm willing to bet, was a member of the coalition.
Sir, you didn't know all the facts. You're now willing to make assumptions and make bets. But your testimony last month was that it was operated by the church in the church basement. That statement, let me finish. That statement was not only incorrect, it was false.
Well, it's not necessarily false. We just, we don't know whether the church was a member of the coalition or not based on what you read.
But your testimony was, "I guess it's St. John's, was operated in the basement of a church by the church." That's not a fact?
It's, I can't verify that because I didn't read the case that carefully, and I didn't memorize it. But in my opinion, the salient fact is that that was in the principal structure. And logic tells me that St. John's was part of the coalition.
So when you testified last month, you didn't say that. You didn't say to the board, "I'm drawing the conclusion that they were part of it." You testified before this board that it was a shelter operated by the church in the church, and that's patently false.
That was my recollection, and that part of my opinion is an error. It doesn't change my conclusion because I believe the church was a member of the coalition. That is logic.
Aside from your view of logic, did you read the CECA case pamphlet?
Yes.
And are you sure what you testified earlier is correct about the CECA case?
Yes.
And you have no doubt that if the board wanted to impose a condition of a buffer, it could?
I already answered that.
I have no further questions, Mr. York.
Thank you, Mr. York. Board members, any questions regarding the witness's testimony?
Yes, the gentleman brought up the fact that, you know, about the buffers. And I just want to, from what I recollect from the last meeting, that was discussed, some of the buffers that your party, that the church had agreed to, the engineer that was here, was that, one, they were going to upgrade the fence to a solid fence. They're going to add extra landscaping for buffering, and that there will also be improvements to the fence in the front, with picket fence with certain distant openings. So as far as some of those issues were discussed at the last meeting, from what I recollect.
That doesn't necessarily comply with your buffer requirement for churches because I think it includes the front. But it's up to the applicant, it would seem to me, right. That is for just the operation of a church. When you add a homeless shelter, which is not a permitted use in the zone, it's not a group home, the answer is, logic tells me, the board should consider enhanced buffers, not just what applies to a church use. But when you have a separate use, like a homeless shelter, it has different land use impacts. And the 20-foot buffer may not be enough, for example. We don't know the facts in terms of what the applicant would like to do.
From my recollection, the engineer at the last meeting, representing the church, did agree not for the church building, but for the, I'm sorry, for the building question where the shelter's going to be. The church's engineer had agreed to put buffer in there as far as the upgrades fencing, solid fencing, so that people, you know-
I agree with, I agree with, I agree that this- One more time, sir. Go ahead. I agree that there was to be fencing, but I don't think there were any details presented about any landscaping.
Sir, follow-up question. What does the ordinance require on buffer?
It's silent on the buffer for homeless shelters, but it requires a 20-foot distance that's an effective buffer for churches.
So the ordinance, if you were adjusted to church building, with people coming, going to church, however often they wish to pray, would be a 20-foot buffer, is that correct?
Yes.
No further questions.
Thank you. Any other board members with a question, Mr. York?
Do you consider the homeless shelter a beneficial use, inherently beneficial use?
Yes.
You also said that, in your testimony, that if this was basically a home where they resided, families, that it would be a permitted use, correct?
If, again, this is not, this is not a residence.
But if it was, it would be-
If it was a residence that didn't have, for, if it was a residence, it would be eligible as a permitted use in the zone.
Permitted use in the zone.
Yes.
Let me ask you a question. Which do you think is more intense? People being there, living there 24/7, or people staying overnight?
People living there 24/7.
Thank you.
Is less intense.
Less intense?
Yes. If you look at the-
Cars coming in and out?
The, well, a single-family dwelling produces 10.1 trips per day on average. A homeless shelter, and for example, like the one in Fort Monmouth, if you look at the records in terms of the number of times people have to be picked up to take to the hospital, have seizures, there's a lot different level of activity for a homeless shelter than a single-family house. In a single-family house, you could stay there all day. Here, you have to leave. That's a whole level, a whole different land use impact than a single-family house.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Mr. Frontenac?
I realize that the applicant, well, sorry. I realize that the applicant doesn't have to testify. You talked about that there's no kind of, you can't, you don't use signatures on the contract.
No, there's, and the application-
No, no, ma'am, I'm asking Mr. York that, if you could tell me who signed the application.
The church.
No, who, person? And what their position is with the church?
It would have been one of the officers of the church because we met with- I can represent to the board that the person who signed isn't back here and was the senior executive officer.
Okay, and what's her name?
Joanne Gwynn.
Thank you.
That's who signed it.
And Melissa has verified that she signed the application.
And her position is she's a senior officer of the church?
Yes.
I'm not, I mean, I'll tell you what the title was. Senior Warden. So, what can I say?
Okay, thank you.
We have allies, we don't have more.
You might be my ally.
Okay. Down to our professionals, Ms. Hill?
I don't, I don't have any comments.
Mr. Weiser?
I really don't have any comments at this stage, please.
Nothing, sir. Questions from the public?
Hi.
Name and address.
Holla, Fugota, Oreo, TTA, 4 Magdoli Lane, Thompson.
Just before we start, I want to make sure that these are questions only regarding this specific, specific witness's testimony.
This location of 133 feet, even though the property line?
Your one house in from the corner?
You know, that is the house that you said was 133 feet.
That was building to building.
But do you know the property line, the feet, the property line?
Appears to be about 60, the main building appears to be about 60 feet from your corner property line.
But what about the garage? Which is that?
I'm scaling Exhibit A2, and the setback from the garage appears to be about nine feet.
That is how close I am to that building.
John Gonzalez, 406 Washington Street. I live across the street from the proposed facility. The comment, comment question is directed to what Mr. York specifically said about the St. John's operation. He said that the homeless coalition in Hoboken, whatever else, and whether St. John's was part of the deal or not, but basically was a religious affiliation and a facility, was supported by donations and staffed by volunteers from the church. That's what-
Objection. He's entitled to ask questions of this witness. He's now testifying.
How do you respond to you?
You don't get to respond to me, Tom.
Mr. Gonzalez, it wasn't Mr. York that testified, it was-
Mr. Gonzalez?
This particular witness.
Yeah, Mr. Gonzalez, at this, Mr. Gonzalez? Okay. Wait, we'll take it.
Meg Otchey, 2258 South Jones Claire Court, in Thompson River.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Wardman, one more time?
Meg Otchey, O-T-C-H-Y. You stated that there were, that it would be more busy, how do I put it exactly? It would be very busy if it was a homeless shelter. And my question to you is, do you have any statistics, actual, you know, where there's been study? Because in my experience, the people come in at a certain, within a certain couple hours, as though people were going home at night. They come in at maybe 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock at night. And then they leave again by 8:00 o'clock in the morning to go to work or wherever they go. So my question is, have you done any studies? I mean, have there actually been certified studies on that being more busy than a regular residence?
Well, number one, it would, in a residence, you get to stay there all day if you want. In this situation, you can't go there earlier, and you have to leave in the morning. Everybody has to leave in the morning that's in the homeless shelter. That creates activity that is uncharacteristic of a single-family house. My, part of my review was to look at the police records for the facility in Monmouth County in Fort Monmouth. And if you look at the records, there are people that occasionally are in distress. So there are a fair amount of 911 calls and calls to the police. And most often, people are then taken, in that case, to the Monmouth Medical Center or Riverview Hospital. That's uncharacteristic of a single-family home.
Yes, but we're talking about a multifamily home.
But the applicant is characterizing this as like a single-family home. This is not. This has 17 people in it. I can't remember a family that I know that had 17 people.
John Gonzalez, try it this way. Mr. Ste-
Isn't it true?
No. Did Mr. York tell you that the facility in Hoboken was operated by volunteers from the church and supported by donations?
He didn't tell me that.
Let me tell you.
He just read from the court case that said there was a coalition there. He didn't tell me who performed the work or if there was a relationship with the church or if there are donations from the church. He didn't say that.
Do you have the record that, am I, is my hearing there, was there donations or said that there?
To the board's permission, I'll be admitted. The facts are essentially not in dispute. Last winter, the members of a Hoboken clergy coalition determined that the plight of homeless was one of the most pressing needs in our city. The coalition therefore began operating a shelter in the basement of St. John's church, supported by donations from member churches. The shelter feeds 30 to 50 persons on an evening meal and provides sleeping accommodations for them. The next morning, the people are given breakfast and return to the streets.
Supported by donations. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, please have a phone call. Please give your name and address to the court report, please.
Monique Mikowski, 28 Brooks Road. So my question- Mikowski, M-I-C-H-O-W-S-K-I. So my question is, can you repeat the variance rule again about a homeless shelter not being a home and the variance in that area and what's permitted? and the variance in that area and what's permitted?
When this application was presented, the applicant suggested that this would be a group home. That's a defined term in the municipal land use law, the state law, which is basically a household that has children not related by blood marriage or adoption. There is also a community shelter that has a limitation, less than seventeen people, but that's licensed by the state. This has a separate license. This is licensed, as I understand it, as a Class II homeless shelter. It's a different entity. It's licensed under a different division of the state. It has markedly different characteristics than a single-family house.
So the variance in our area would not permit that? It would have to be changed by the planning board?
Well, the, the Board of Address- This is, the applicant is seeking a so-called de-variance. I think there's a concession now that it's not permitted in the single-family zone. And in my opinion, it is not eligible to be accessory to the church. Consequently, this board has to decide whether the proofs for a variance are on the record.
Okay, thank you very much.
Steve Preola, 26 Brooks Road. So I know you were trying to determine whether this St. John's was owned by a part of the clergy. If you knew factually, if that is true, would it help your testimony?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, you know, Harvey York was saying that you don't, that you have no factual evidence that this other case in Hoboken stated that St. John's is part of this coalition.
It didn't specify, but my logical assumption is that it was-
And he was stating that you're assuming it?
Yes.
Okay, if I can give you evidence and try to explain to you why Harvey York just now you can look it up through Google and say that yes, St. John's of that evangelical Lutheran church in Hoboken was indeed taught by the Hoboken Clergy Coalition that opened up a homeless shelter in the basement of the church?
Well, that would affirm that my suspicion was correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Weiser.
Please, a second. Paul Wind, 35 Brooks Street, Tompkins Road. I want to first clarify something. First of all, thank you for your testimony. But I also want to clarify something. Did you testify a little while ago? And if you did, was it, was it an error? But did you testify earlier that, in your opinion, that a homeless shelter is inherently beneficial use?
It is an inherently beneficial use, but that's not the end of the story. You have to go through the CECA steps because there are situations where the negatives that arise from the use, unbalanced, can't be satisfied. So it doesn't, when I say it's an inherently beneficial use, it does not mean that it merits approval.
So, first of all, I want to, I want to ask you if this refreshes your memory. The definition of inherently beneficial use according to the statute means a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it sufficiently serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. Such a use includes, but is not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, group home, or a wind, solar, I don't know which of this word, photovoltaic energy facility or structure. Does that sound familiar to you?
That's, that's what's in the municipal land use law.
And that isn't controlling statute in this, in this particular matter, correct?
Well, as you know, it's open-ended. It, if it's inherently beneficial, you follow the CECA case in analyzing it. This is not a group home, in my opinion, so it doesn't automatically fit that category. But the first step in the CECA process is determining the magnitude of the public benefit. And in my judgment, the location of this, on the edge of the camp, the religious campus, and very close to single-family homes, does two things. It suggests this is not a great location and it may lessen the public benefit that arises in it, although it's beneficial to have a homeless shelter. But it also, in my opinion, means that the board should be more cautious about addressing the negative criteria because it is so close to homeless.
Right. So correct me if I'm misunderstanding something. What you have just described is more of an interpretation of what this statute might mean. Do you agree with me on that?
Well, the statute says included but not limited to. So it is debatable, number one, if it fits the category of inherently beneficial use. But part of that is, what is the magnitude of the benefit? And even though there clearly is a need for housing the homeless, at least in a shelter service, that's not the end of the story. You still have to, unbalanced, meet the negative criteria. And that's where I believe this applicant has not provided sufficient evidence.
And I agree with you, but look, just a moment, we can hammer it down a little bit more. So when you, I think you're agreeing that there is a portion in it that's kind of vague and subject to interpretation where it says, but is not limited to, correct?
Correct.
So, aside from the interpretation, the fine language of the statute does not expressly provide that a homeless shelter is among the inherently beneficial uses, correct?
That's correct. It is not, it's not listed as a use that's automatically inherently beneficial.
And so your opinion inherently beneficial use is based on a reading and interpreting? And your professional opinion, where courts have talked about the issue of homelessness and also homeless shelters, correct?
It requires a judgment to look at what public benefits arise from the very nature of the use.
And so an applicant should, should, should still have to fulfill the obligation of proving that, for example, a homeless shelter is by but not limited to argument, an inherently beneficial use, correct?
In general, it's the burden of the applicant on all of these applications. And I believe the applicant is obligated to make the case. And inherently, part of that is not just the name homeless shelter. It's to quantify the benefit that arises, in my opinion, in this setting because that influences the negative criteria when you're so close to single-family homes.
And so, can you tell us all, particularly the board, what's the point of the argument about whether or not it is or is not an inherently beneficial use under the plain language of the statute?
Well, the, it changes the level of proof that the applicant needs to provide.
Right. And if the applicant hasn't provided proof, sufficient proof, of the positive criteria, or let's get into that gray yard, the gray area, the but not limited to section. Is it your opinion that the applicant should still have to overcome that hurdle?
Well, the applicant has already presented their case. In my opinion, there has been insufficient evidence to satisfy the CECA criteria.
And would you agree with me that part of the reason is because the applicant, through their attorney, has tried to attach themselves to this one phrase in the statute that says group home?
Well, that's how the applicant started. And I'm not sure the applicant is sticking to that argument, but it's clearly not a group home, in my opinion.
And in your opinion, there is still much to be desired. The applicant has closed their presentation. In your opinion, there's still very much more to be desired in order to satisfy their burden of proof.
In my opinion, they have not met their burden.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Preola, 26 Brooks Road. Also, of the beneficial uses, they also have to show that it doesn't have a detrimental effect on the community, et cetera?
Say that one more time.
By placing in this homeless shelter, they have to prove that it has a beneficial use and we know homeless shelters is good for the community. But in placing it in certain parts of society or neighborhoods or right here where you need a variance, but it's not even approved, they're also supposed to say and show that it doesn't have a significant detriment to the community, et cetera?
Yes, they still have to meet the negative criteria.
For group homelessness, are you aware of, how many percent of the group homelessness has drug and alcohol addiction?
I'm not aware, but it is a phenomenon. As I again looked at the, okay, police records for, I'll call it a parallel facility, there were a number of instances where people had seizures, they were addicted, they were having withdrawal. There is a element of the population that is drug dependent.
So if you look up in Google, and this is a form of a question, if you look up in Google, you will see that thirty-three to fifty percent of the paid people that are in a homeless shelter do have drug and alcohol addiction. And my question to you is, having this situated in a residential, at the residential area where there's three schools in walking distance, including two middle school or grammar school, you know, schools where children from Mondon jog through this area day and night, would it be a possible detriment on these children to have this in the area?
I think it requires greater sensitivity because of this location. And it, in my opinion, it's a factor.
Also, you think that it would be a detrimental effect to the female homeless to have male homeless people in another section right next to them sleeping at night? From what I explained, what I heard in the previous testimony, that there's only a curtain separating it and there's no way that these females, when they go to sleep, they can protect themselves off of it for any other problems?
Objection. This is way beyond this-
You objected. Thank you. I just sent my testimony, thank you.
So your objection on the record?
The objection is it's way beyond his testimony as a professional plan.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public with a question for the witness?
Quick questions.
Quick questions. There are several laws on this.
Zach Ackerman, 19 Oakland Road. And my question, I did miss your previous testimony, so I'm sorry to state it, but only-
Oh, it was great.
Okay.
That's a joke.
Talking about drug and alcohol use among that population. I work with, as a social worker, not exclusively with people experiencing homelessness, but among other things. So I'm curious, is this, is there any stipulation that this facility will be treating or housing people specifically with that condition?
Objection. It's beyond the scope of his testimony. Not even close. I didn't know-
That was outside the scope of this witness's testimony. It is something that has been addressed in previous meetings. So through the internet, you might be able to get a copy of those meetings and hear that testimony. That's definitely not something that this witness-
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware. Thank you for-
Thank you. Mr. Luther.
I have a quick question. Best to my knowledge, in 2000, the municipal land use law was amended in NJSA 52D4. And we defined inherently beneficial use as following. A use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare, such as included or not limited law. These include churches, other places of worship, community shelters, public housing, public interest housing such as senior, low-income, housing for the homeless, public utility installations, healthcare facilities for the elders, and schools for development and disabled. Is that true?
I don't recall that wording.
I read the statute.
Well, I don't recall, I don't recall that wording.
You can't, is it-
Would you, is this, what's the-
It was revised. It was amended in 2000. Okay, which said basically-
Is this the definition of inherently beneficial?
Yes.
Would you read it again for me?
Sure. In which a universally considered value to the community because it's fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare, such as include or not limited law. These include churches, other places of worship, community shelters, public housing, public interest housing such as senior, low-income, housing for the homeless, public utility installations, healthcare facilities for the elderly, and schools for development and disabled.
I've already conceded that, in my opinion, this is an inherently beneficial use.
I just wanted to clear that up because I just wanted to make sure that it spelled out homelessness.
I've already, in response to your question, admitted that, in my opinion, this is an inherently beneficial use. But that doesn't mean it merits approval automatically.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to clear up that it's quite specific, that it is inherently beneficial. It's actually not.
Thank you.
You have, you had testified that approximately seventeen people would be coming, coming in the evening and leaving in the morning. That creates additional coming and going. But what is the difference between that and the normal business of the church, which has services with hundreds of people, which has events, could have parties at their rec, well, and evenings would have hundreds of people coming and going, which also they have flea markets there? What is the difference between seventeen people coming and going or two hundred, three hundred, whatever?
The ordinance treats it differently. The ordinance does not, the ordinance permits houses of worship in this zone. It does not permit homeless shelters. So the church could have threefold increase in congregations. That would be more traffic, more activity, but that's permitted in your local zoning ordinance. What is not permitted is a homeless shelter in the single-family R150 zone.
Thank you, but my question was, what's the difference between, you had said that this is, that seventeen extra people are going to create a detriment for the neighborhood. But what difference is it whether seventeen people come and go from the facility being posed or seventeen people from the church?
Because I think there are different land use impacts. This is a shelter that's going to be operating 24/7. It happens to be close to single-family homes. And it has different attributes simply because of the population it serves. I would, my judgment is that there are going to be more 911 calls from this building than there is from the church, definitely. Because people who don't find a home, they have troubles. Some of them are drug addicted, some of them have ailments that are not treated. It's a different population that requires more attention than a normal churchgoer, in my opinion.
Mr. Weiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, you've confused me a little bit. Talking about inherently beneficial uses, what they are. There's steps you have to go through through the CECA balancing test. What is the first step?
It's to determine, the way I phrase it, is the magnitude of the inherently beneficial use. Is this a head trauma center, a regional head trauma center, which was the CECA case? Or is this the storage of school buses, which is inherently beneficial, but at the low end of the scale? So the first step is to, the way I phrase it, is to determine the magnitude of the public benefit that arises from the nature of the use.
Okay. I think the wording, and I may not get it exactly right, is to determine the public interest at stake.
I think I said that, but in a longer fashion.
Okay. And then you were talking about how the public, I'll use that language, probably not the language you use, but the public interest is less if you put this- language you use, but the public interest is less if you put this particular proposed use here, where it's proposed, as opposed to someplace else?
With an inherently beneficial use, as you know, you don't have to prove particular suitability of the property, but if this site were in the middle of a state forest that homeless people couldn't get to, even though it's an inherently beneficial use, it doesn't serve its population well. If this was in an area that was, for example, close to other public institutions, walking distance to restaurants, it would seem to me it would better serve its population. Part of the testimony was all the driving that has to be done, people have to be picked up, delivered places, so what I'm saying is that the location of this, outside of an urbanized environment, in my opinion, is relevant in judging the magnitude of the public benefit that's provided.
So you're saying that this public, are you saying that the public benefit by the project as proposed is less in this current location than it would be if it was in downtown Tom's River? Yes. Okay. Give me a second, because I'm not even sure. You were talking about restaurants and various adjacencies that would make it more beneficial. This is an, how do you reconcile the fact that this is an overnight sleeping facility? The facility during the day is counseling and working with the client base to get them housed and to take them to programs, and they would not be eating here, it's simply a sleeping facility?
I don't know exactly where St. John's is in Hoboken, but...
I'm not talking about Hoboken.
Let me finish my statement. The court case said after people have their breakfast, they return to the street. Now, it wasn't like they got taxis or buses, that's the nature of Hoboken, the whole city is a pedestrian-oriented environment. Here's a situation that if someone has to leave at eight o'clock in the morning, there are not facilities close by that they can spend the rest of the day. They can take advantage of the social services that are in this building, and that may extend their stay on the property, but the point of fact, as I understand the testimony, is that they can't stay there before five, and they have to get out at eight.
Right. Exactly, so they're not going to be extending their stay. They're going to be, they're going to be taken by the daytime program for lack of a term, the program that exists today, and taken out to whatever...
That's potentially a different clientele, allegedly that clientele is served today. There are people that are served by this facility that are not served, as I understand it, by the proposed shelter, so there's a clientele...
I don't believe that's the testimony. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification... Just for clarification of the record, the municipal land use law was amended in 2021, 2022, Mr. Luthman, and the true definition of inherently beneficial use as we sit here today means a use which is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good, promotes the general welfare. Such a use includes, but is not limited to, a hospital, school, childcare center, group home, or a wind, solar, or photovoltaic energy facility or structure.
Photovoltaic, right?
If that's it, we're gonna die on tonight, then we die on that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a additional question. Sir, you just testified in the plan that because this facility is located near residents, it becomes a less inherently beneficial use. Is that your testimony?
In my opinion, two things happen, that the location may be related to how well it serves its clients, and that has to do with the magnitude of the public benefit, but more importantly, it affects the negative criteria.
Do you have any case law that substantiates your opinion that the location of this facility affects the degree of the inherently beneficial use?
I'm just using my logic, that a facility, that many homeless people don't have cars, they have to rely on public transportation, they have to walk to different places, some place that has better public transportation, that is in a more walkable environment, in my opinion, is likely to better serve its clientele.
That was the question. Is there any case law that substantiates your opinion that the location of this structure affects the degree of the inherently beneficial use? Give me the case law.
I'm going to answer that I don't know any case law.
So there is no law to substantiate your opinion?
No, no, I don't know of any.
Hang on, you guys have a question? You can't have a microphone, so we get your objection on the record, please.
Mr. Girk is trying to intubate in some way, that this has a question of law. This is a question of whether or not this particular location, where people are coming in to stay or not, there's also testimony that they can stay there the entire day. So if this is what we're talking about, then I object to the form of question.
I'll ask you a question. The question was, do you have any law that substantiates your opinion that the location of this site reduces the inherently beneficial use? Yes or no?
I don't know any case law.
You then testified that this would be better suited downtown, correct?
It would be better suited in an environment that was more pedestrian-oriented, had better supply of goods and services, and better connections with mass transit.
But you specifically said, when someone, I remember, who asked, would this be better off in downtown Tom's River?
Because downtowns tend to have an array of goods and services, better mass transit, and a walkable environment, that's why.
Have you been to downtown Tom's River?
I think we're in it right now.
Is there any mass transit within two blocks?
I didn't count the bus service here, but typically there is more bus service in a heavily urbanized environment than a rural environment.
I'm talking about downtown Tom's River. There's a bus terminal, do you know where it is?
I don't know exactly where it is.
What other services are provided in downtown Tom's River that would meet your criteria?
All I'm saying is, generically, there is a wider range of goods and services and mass transit in a downtown.
Is there any place in the town of the Tom's River that would meet your qualification for the homeless shelter to meet those services?
I haven't done that research, so I can't answer your question. No further questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Sir, go back to Mr. Montana?
Sir, I just want to have, just to make sure, so the Congress now, he quoted a law from 2000, and you just updated, you updated us that that actually has been modified twice in 2000?
It's been modified at least once, in the law that I wrote.
So another person knows, or anybody?
No, I just wanted to clarify.
So the law that he read into the record in 2000 is incorrect?
It's...
Question changed and modified?
Pressed to tell my client it's incorrect, but it's been modified, but it still has the catch-all provision that of those types of uses.
But it was in there.
It was in there, it was in there previously.
Okay, thank you.
But to be fair, the previous testimony has all testified as to be currently most up-to-date law.
I just have a question regarding overflow, if you will. You had done measurements to how far off the property line the garage was, if, to, as far as the traffic in and out of the facility goes, if people were to stay there because they found it to be a safe place, because they knew it was a homeless shelter, and if they were in their cars, how far away from the property lines is the farthest legal parking as of right now?
Farthest or closest?
Or closest, rather, I'm so sorry. Thanks.
Assuming they're not allowed to use the garage... The closest parking space is about 150 feet from the property line.
Okay. And would you think, in your opinion, is that inherently beneficial to have people stay in their cars 150 feet away?
Well, it's, I can't answer that specifically. As I, you know, if someone wants to have a smoke, they don't stay in the building, they have to go outside the building, presumably, to have a smoke, so the answer is, there is a, there are people that are going to be serviced by the shelter, it does have a land use impact that is much greater, in my opinion, than a single-family dwelling. It was not intended to be in this zone by your standards in Tom's River, and in my opinion, because of that additional level of interest, again, I don't think the applicant has provided sufficient evidence that would allow this board to say he met the secret test.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I need to do one more question. In what zone would a homeless shelter be permitted in the township of Tom's River?
It's not outright listed as a permitted use in any zone. Thank you. May I, did you have a question?
I do.
Please step forward.
Mary Malle Givere, 868 Crest Bridge Drive, Tom's River.
Just by the last name, please.
I could say that, but... My question is, I thought I heard you say at least three times this evening that the shelter is planned on operating 24/7.
Well, there'll be people there 24/7, but they'll only be eligible to sleep there from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.
Where do you have that documented? Because I volunteer at the center, and it is not operating 24/7, even at the resource center.
The resource center has like a agency day on Thursdays, so they're different, but there are people in the, if this is approved, I believe there'll be people in that building 24 hours a day.
You don't have that in writing or documented, or do you?
From the testimony, that's my understanding, that there'll be a staff there at night, but there'll also be a staff in the daytime.
Yes, because the resource center operates Monday through Friday, from nine until about four, maybe five o'clock. That's when the resource center operates. They don't operate on Saturdays and Sundays, but if there is, the shelter is approved, there would be people there in the evening time to cover those evening hours. It's not the resource, unless you have it in writing.
That was, I don't have it in writing, that was my understanding, and I didn't know the exact, I didn't know you were off on Saturday, is the answer.
Or Sundays.
So it's a little less than 24/7, but there'll be a lot of activity now in the evening as opposed to now there's no activity in the evening.
Correct. So my other question for you is, you keep referring to the center in Mondan, the homeless shelter, how many beds do they have?
They have sixteen beds, twelve for men and four for women.
And they operate 24/7, or is it only in the evening?
It's only in the evening.
And do you have the documentation as to how many calls they have gotten, or is it just a guess?
The, the police records, so from 2021 on, we have records.
And what do they show?
Well, again, in 2021, I think there were like thirty-three calls to the police. I would say a third of them were 911 calls, the others were calls from the agency, some of them were people that, I would say, in the, at least fifty percent of the calls required someone to be picked up and brought to the hospital, the Mondan Medical Center.
So thirty-three calls, operating 24/7?
Well, that doesn't, it's just in the evening there.
Okay, just in the evening, thirty-three calls, operating in what year?
That was 2021, is my recollection.
The documentation system?
It went down as the years went on. And I discounted the raccoon in the dumpster calls, kind of things like that.
So thirty-three calls, and you were operating a full year?
Yes.
In the evenings?
Yes.
Five to eight a.m. or whatever it'd be?
Yes.
Evening times?
Yes.
Not a bad record, would you say?
More than a single-family house.
And what statistic, where do you pull that from?
I don't know a house that had that many, the answer is, I haven't surveyed single-family houses, but in my experience, I think it would be unusual for a single-family house to make thirty-three 911 calls in a year.
Unless there's domestic violence involved? Perhaps.
Perhaps.
Or illness?
That could be the case.
I'm at Monas 406, Washington Street.
Microphone.
John Gonzalez, 406, Washington. Did you hear the board member say there were going to be no meals served at this facility?
There, there's only a warming kitchen, as I understand it, there's not going to be full food preparation.
Did I hear, you, did you hear the board member say there were going to be no meals served at this facility?
I don't remember a board member saying that, I don't recall.
Sir, did no more member give testimony that food would not be served?
Yeah.
The board does not testify.
I'll leave that for now, but...
Mr. Tattletale, then, you can come up, and then I'm going to go to Mr. Tattletale first.
Yes. Did you check to see if there are any other temporary shelters in Tom's River Township at all, when you deal with this?
I just listened to the testimony, I don't, I don't recall that there was any testimony of another, I don't remember specifically.
All right, you talked specifically before about the number of beds of temporary shelter?
There are seventeen beds proposed.
Are you familiar with 2445 ones you're adding in Tom's River?
Not by that address.
Okay, that's an eighteen-bed, single-family facility in a residential zone, that basically does the same thing.
Is it a homeless shelter, is it licensed as a homeless shelter?
It's licensed as a temporary shelter currently for families, and it's going to, I believe they changed their title to only for young men.
I'm not sure that's the same, that's the same classification as this shelter. This is a Class II homeless shelter by state law, I believe.
All right, but we're talking about shelters in general, you were talking about it before, about inherently beneficial?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, have you checked into the township of Tom's River for any other type of shelters that may or may not be inherently beneficial to the residents?
I have not done a separate investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, please step forward. John Podgey, 30 Brooks Road, in Tom's River. John Paggi, 30 Works Road, up in Toms River, last name P A G G I. Sir, I'd just like to go back a little quickly to the conversation about your, your, your answer to the question whether or not this facility would be better placed in downtown Toms River. Now, when you were asked that question, the question specifically was, would it be better situated in downtown Toms River? Or you said yes here. When you said yes, were you suggesting that downtown Toms River was the optimal location for this?
Uh, not at all, I was just emphasizing the principle that when there is, there is a broader range of mass transit, uh, goods and services, a walkable environment, it seems to me that it would be easier to use the shelter rather than having to be shoved by bus or car.
And I know you haven't done this investigation yet, but based on your knowledge of the, of the location as currently being proposed, would you speculate that there's a better location within Ocean County where this facility could be located?
Um, I would, I would, I think that, um, well, that's not the test that there's a better location or not, but in my opinion, uh, this location suffers because it is in a low-density, single-family zone, and it is so close to single-family houses.
Please step forward.
Hi, Amanda Barton, 17 Magnolia Lane. Um, I just wanted to ask you, if you recall, there was a person who asked you a question, um, a few people ago, about operation hours 24 hours a day, the discrepancy between that? I believe what she asked you, or what she explained to you was that the daytime resource center operated between 9 and 4, and the nighttime center, they would have to be exiting by 8, and then couldn't go in again until 5. So to me, that sounds like an hour on both sides, where they have nowhere to be, is that basic?
Yeah, it's, yes, there's a little bit of a gap, but that assumes that, you know, people leave at 8 o'clock and, and kind of disappear, don't hang around. Uh, and it also assumes that, uh, people at the center, you know, race out of the door at 4 o'clock.
Of course, does that also, is it reasonable in your interpretation then that if students for the Toms River schools were standing at the bus stop at Washington and Magnolia at 8:00 AM, picked up at the bus by 8:15, they would very likely be having a lot of foot traffic, coming and going past their bus stop?
There, there may well be an, an interaction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Gazaresky.
I just have a couple.
One more, one more.
One more.
My name is Rosemary Gohe, I live at 691 North String Drive in Toms River. I'm a volunteer with St. Joseph's Church, I'm 83 years old, and I work with the homeless every day of the week. And I have been doing so since 2003. Never have I been accosted, sworn at, treated as...
Question!
There has to be a question.
I have a question at the end of my statement.
No, no questions.
Ma'am, ma'am.
All right, I'll put it right there. I asked the board to put this in their thinking caps.
Ma'am.
Next to my house is a single-family home.
Ma'am, ma'am, over here.
Ma'am. You can address statements at a, at a later time?
Yes.
But for now, we're only asking questions at this witness.
All right, I'll ask the gentleman. I live in a single-family home, alone. In the very next house to mine, which is identical to my own, four bedrooms, my bed, my own has two beds, that own has one. There are 12 people living. I know for a fact it was sold to the Jewish in Lincoln.
Ma'am, question, question.
I want to know, what is the difference between that home and my situation as any poor person who would be placed in this shelter should be open? And the people living nearby, there's no difference.
Um, Mr. Gazaresky.
Okay, just a couple. You listened to the testimony regarding to, uh, the owner of the property, the applicant, whatever they think. Uh, you've read the church, have you not?
Yes.
Is any testimony showing any involvement on part of Christ Church in this operation?
There is no testimony on the record indicating the church is involved.
Any testimony on the record showing that they have some type of supervisory capacity with regard to the operation of this facility?
There is no such evidence.
Okay. Is it your opinion, based upon your experience as a player and your expertise, that the applicant should have been, in fact, the operator of this facility, rather than simply attempting to utilize whatever grace comes from being called Christ Shelter?
Um, I think in order to classify this as an accessory use to the church, uh, there ought to be some facts that would support that.
Yes, which is really something, which was it not, that you depended on that?
Uh, I, I can't answer whether it's sub- subterfuge or not.
Well, is there any evidence of the church being involved in the operation of this facility?
There is no evidence on the record.
Any testimony from any church member or clergy with regard to this operation?
Uh, I don't recall a representative of the church offering testimony and describing the relationship.
Questions were raised with regard to, uh, whether or not, or what happens during the daytime when, uh, the hours of housing these people expire. Is there any testimony showing, any percentiles of how many of these people who are coming for the homeless shelter have jobs where they will not be simply hanging around the facility, or hanging around the golf course, or hanging around the library in Toms River? Any testimony at all?
There's no testimony about the incidence of people successfully getting jobs. But, I mean, the agency tries to do that, but there's no, there's no statistics on the record.
Now, you're aware of the fact, or are you not, that the entity that operates this particular facility, uh, has a budget of in excess of millions of dollars a year?
Uh, I'm not aware of the specifics, but I understand that there's a large budget, there was a grant, uh, I guess, there was a grant to renovate the building.
As a planner, is there any logic whatever to placing a facility like this in a residential zone?
In, in my opinion, this is one of the, less appropriate locations for a homeless shelter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, do I understand you have another eyewitness tonight? Okay. Would you like a five-minute break?
Yeah.
They changed the statement.
So we'll take a quick five-minute recess, we'll come back, um, just after 9:10.
Mr. Chairman, you want to remind everybody that we have a hard stop, we have a hard stop.
I am glad to do that, to let everyone know, uh, we have a hard stop at 10 o'clock. So we will hear testimony and comment up until that point, um, and then we will be rescheduling. So.
Mr. Chairman, I really just have one question. Uh, I would assume we're either going to be finishing either back 10 o'clock or close to 10 o'clock. Uh, I would only request that because of the nature of the summation and the length of it, that if we're closing sometime close to 10 o'clock, then we serve closing comments following meetings.
Well, we're obviously not finishing tonight, we have to take public comment.
Yeah.
Your, your client's testimony, those public comment will not finish by 10 o'clock, I think so. Do you think you can get your direct testimony done by 10?
I don't know.
Ha!
Something you don't want to take into consideration, because we are stopping at 10.
I'm not thinking you start counting.
No, I understood, no. You want to step back?
I'll ready when you are.
I'll ready.
I want to call as my next witness, my only other witness, Mr. Daniel Malifer.
Mr. Chairman, do you aspire for a testimony, if I could recall this word, it would be the truth, the whole truth, and I think that's the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please, by your name.
Donald Malifer, M-O-L-I-V-E-R.
Mr. Malifer, I'm calling you as an extra witness, am I not?
Yes.
Would you give the board the benefit of your present employment, as well as your educational background in the area upon which you're going to testify?
Yes, I wear a couple of hats. I've been a faculty member, professor of real estate at Monmouth University for 46 years. In addition to that, I, uh, MAI, designated and state-certified real estate appraiser, where I've performed consulting tasks for 39 years.
Okay, have you testified before boards of justice or planning boards of the best?
Anytime.
Have you testified before courts of law such as Superior Courts in the state of Michigan?
Yes.
I would just ask that you recognize as an expert.
Mr. York, no objection?
No objection. Great mercy.
Okay, Mr. Oliver, you were retained by me to give testimony in the form of certain, I won't use the word test, but comparisons with regard to the application of questions, huh?
Yes.
Uh, did you have ad- did you have occasion to review the testimony that set forth the comments and transcripts which were provided to you with regard to this application?
Yes.
Could you justify to the board exactly what you were charged with doing by me with regard to your given testimony you see?
You answered a very straightforward question, which is basically, what impact, if any, would the approvals of the proposed project have upon residential properties in proximity?
Okay, and did you perform such tests?
Yes, I did.
And did you prepare a report which you provided to me, which I divided to the secretary, and then you distributed to the board members?
Yes.
If you can, rather than my asking you a series of questions and answers, just give us the benefit of your testimony and what observations you made. Also, by the way, were you present during the most recent testimony?
Yes.
Did you hear testimony concerning impacts that news such as this would have upon residential homes?
Yes.
Is that addressed in your, in your report?
Yes, it is.
Okay, let's hear it.
Thank you. So, this is not the easiest task to perform, but fortunately, there was enough data out there that I think I could make a, a reasonable argument as to a, a loss of value. And, uh, the first thing I did was I inspected the, uh, the church property. I took the liberty of driving through. Actually, prior to that, I met with, uh, Mr. Ryan, who, who resides on Magnolia Avenue. And, um, and then I went to the church property, and I saw the parish where the proposed expansion might take place, and the proximity to the houses that backed up to Magnolia. Uh, I also noticed that there was a, a tent in the back door where somebody apparently had been sleeping, sleeping bags, blankets, beer cans. Um, this is what I noticed back there. It was a little surprising, but, uh, that was part of my inspection, and some of those photographs are actually in my report. All right, so the next step, you just don't find a shelter that was built, and then you see what the impact is upon value of, say, the joint property. It just doesn't work that way. Uh, so what I did was simply I googled shelters for Ocean County. And, uh, I did that several times, and every time I did it, I got slightly different answers as to where these shelters were located. But four kept on coming up repeatedly. Um, and they're in my report, I just want to highlight a few essential elements of each of these. The first was in, uh, on Main Street in West Creek. And actually, Main Street is Route 9, heavily trafficked roadway. This house was isolated. It was a single-family residential home, it was isolated off the roadway, it was on a heavily wooded tract, there was a lot of vacant land nearby for a couple of commercial uses. There was no residential backup in proximity. So it's virtually impossible to see how that shelter might impact residential values that weren't in proximity. The next property, I don't know the name of the church, it was a rather large church located at 377 Main Street in Waretown. And not surprisingly, Main Street in Waretown is also Route 9, heavily trafficked roadway. All right, on this property was a second residence used, uh, at the Good Samaritan House, an outreach to the new, to, to the needy, including temporary shelter for men. Again, this was limited residential backup in the neighborhood. All right, there were some commercial uses and large vacant tracts of land. The third property was on West, Lake, West Lacy Road in Forkett River, which is also known as Tempe Road 614. This location, actually, the, the facility was originally built on a church property to house clergy. Right now, it only has four bedrooms in the facility with shared restrooms. It's really limited, restricted in terms of hours. And in that neighborhood, unlike the first two that I described, is everything from butcher shops to tattoo parlors to a full array of retail and, and medical office buildings in proximity. It's just where it is, but it's on heavily trafficked, commercial roadway. The last one, I think, is the most interesting, and the gentleman to my left, Mr. Tutella, is it?
Yes.
He actually mentioned that, that property. It's known as the Harbor House at 2445 Windsor Avenue. And that property's been a shelter for almost 40 years. Uh, that 18 beds, and it's in a residentially zone neighborhood. So, uh, that property seemed, not only was it in Toms River, but it seemed, um, most similar in terms of comparison that I was trying to undertake, to see if there's an impact at all. So what I then used is something that we call match pairs. If you could just follow this for two more minutes, then I'll, I'll get into my analysis. A match pair is something that doesn't exist often. It's two sales, two properties that are very, very similar, except for one thing. So, for example, if Hapmanee and the Toll Brothers built a subdivision home, a tract subdivision, and half-acre lot, next floor is another half-acre lot, same side of the street, identical in terms of age and condition and size, same house. One sells for 400, the other sells for 430. You say, why? And I'm assuming that it's been exposed on the market for a reasonable amount of time. You say, why did this happen? Well, one, one that sold for 430 had a pool. The one that sold for 400 didn't have a pool. So with a match pair analysis, there are identical properties except for one factor. The one factor is the pool. What we then say is the pool, according to this market, is worth $30,000. And that's how we extract the market adjustment from that. Now, what happens if there are multiple differences? Well, then it's really not a match pair. So if you follow the pool example, and we just add one other layer to it. Let's just say that the first house sold a year earlier, and it sold for, let's just say around 360. And there was 10% inflation that occurred year to year. And the house next floor has a pool, so two things are different now. There's a time adjustment that's warranted, and a pool adjustment. So if I, if I went to MLS local listing, or I went to Zillow, where I found other data in the marketplace, I could take the first sale that occurred a year ago, bring it up for time, make it current, just like a house next door with a pool. And then I could say, oh, this is what the pool is worth, after we adjusted for time. This was the type of analysis that I did by comparing the Harbor House property to other- This was the type of analysis that I did by comparing the Harbor House property to other properties in the, in the neighborhood. Either on Windsor, where Harbor House is located, or just off some side streets to the north. Now, in this case, first instance, I compared, this is on page eight of my report, I compared twenty-two twenty-seven Windsor to twenty-two sixty-five Windsor Avenue. So I compared two properties, both on Windsor. Now Windsor's a busy street, but if they're both on Windsor, then we don't have to get into how much of an influence the street has, because it would apply equally to both properties. And then I made a series of adjustments. Now, these are very common adjustments. This is what appraisers do. These are numbers that are not just picked out of the sky. For adjustments, I went to MLS and Zillow for time. All right, for differences in gross living area, I mean, just the difference between the size of one house compared to another. Remember, these are forty-year-old homes. They use the depreciated value of, say, a hundred dollars a square foot. And then, you know, for something like a two-car garage versus a one-car garage, I adjusted by ten thousand dollars. The incremental value of the extra, that extra garage. Now, it's, it's pretty detailed, but at the end of the day, look at the bottom of page eight. Twenty-two sixty-five is worth three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If you look at the, the second column where it says subject, the other property we're comparing it to sold for four fifty-five. So there's a difference of eighty-five thousand dollars after the adjustments occurred. That's a twenty-three percent difference. Now, the one thing I didn't adjust for is because I'm trying to find out through the market what it's worth, is location. Twenty-two sixty-five is real close Harbor House. It's real close to Harbor House. All right? The other property is quite a distance away. And it's a twenty-three. So if you look at page nine, I'm saying to compare those two properties, both on Windsor, the one that is closest to Harbor House sold for twenty-three percent less than the one that's on the street.
But you also did take into consideration twenty-two sixty-five's next door to the bowling field, which is there playing baseball eleven months a year now, kind of traffic and you came to park on the street. So you didn't compare apples to apples, you compared apples to numbers.
Okay. Actually, let me get back to that. It's a fair comment. I have the MLS sheet in the addenda of my report here. Didn't mention anything about the ball field, which picked up.
Right next door.
I understand.
I mean, and, and it's right, and, and between the ball field and that is there's a kind of utility authorities pumping station. So I haven't grabbed the price up again.
Next to Harbor House is a pumping station for the water company.
I'm very aware.
Okay? So I will get back to you. All right? Now, the next match pair went through the same analysis. Now I'm comparing again twenty-two sixty-five to fourteen sixty-three, which is over a mile down the road. At the end of the day, it was a twelve point four percent difference. So the property that's closest to Harbor House, and is real close, sold for a little over twelve percent less than the property at fourteen sixty-three.
Excuse me, are you taking into consideration when they were sold?
Yes.
There's almost a year difference.
No, no, that's a great point. And if you look at, let me find it. About a third of the way down on the grid, it's actually green on, on page ten here.
Yeah, okay.
You see I brought it up for time by forty-one thousand. Okay, and that, and that's based upon the Zillow index and MLS data.
Can you explain to the board what the Zillow index is?
Uh, Zillow, um, Zillow's come a long way. They would track sales and resales of, of property, single-family houses. And then they would extract the rates of appreciation or depreciation over time. For even the municipality, it could be anything from dozens to thousands of transactions. The algorithm that they use has become so sophisticated that the Federal Reserve Bank, United States, now uses Zillow to give you rates of appreciation.
And you thought that was appropriate to use it in your analysis over here?
Yes, plus I think it's, it's common knowledge that twenty-three, twenty-four prices were still going up with market. So that's perfectly legitimate. And the fact that it was adopted by the Federal Reserve, I think speaks.
Can we go off to your fourteen sixty-three, twenty-two sixty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Forty-two sixty-three Windsor Avenue, and you're all over states there. That's a buy level home on a lot that probably a hundred by hundred and seventy-five. Twenty-two sixty-five Windsor Avenue is a lot.
Wait, can we get that phone silenced, please?
Sorry.
Twenty-two sixty-five Windsor Avenue is a lot that's probably a hundred by hundred and sort of ranch. So again, we didn't compare apples to apples. We compared sales to sales, because you looked at what the sale, what the closest point of value was in fourteen sixty-three Windsor Avenue to what you had at twenty-two sixty-five Windsor Avenue. And again, you're just looking at numbers. I understand it very well.
All right, I, uh, in the first instance, I said I would get back to that. This is what I want to address right now. Because on my grid, I actually have the site size that's twelve thousand seven sixty-eight. That's a fourteen sixty-three, and the second sale was eight thousand. And then I adjusted it up for it. All right, now after you meet the minimum zoning requirements, any surplus land was adjusted, I think, at about twenty-five dollars a square foot.
So using your Zillow analysis, when's the last time that you took any readings of any real estate that was sold in the area of twenty-four forty-five Windsor Avenue? When did you last go to Zillow?
No, I, I didn't use Zillow to determine the value that they say it's worth. I used Zillow to track rates of appreciation for the zip code of Tom group.
So you took a percentage ratio for two of them to come to that number?
Yes.
So, right now, I'm listing today at.
Which one, sorry?
I'm gonna give you the address, just so I don't get this wrong. Um, twenty-four twenty Windsor Avenue, which is approximately sixty-five feet from another property in question of twenty-four sixty-five Windsor Avenue that we're talking about. That house listed today for four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Nowhere it's near the numbers that you're showing. So the ratio and the sales ratio that you're using is an skewed number because you're moving all around with the math. I understand how you came to that. I understand ratios and values of real estate very well. But what I'm getting at is, if we're going to compare, just like if you were going to go into tax court tomorrow, we happen to have an appraised value of something that says equal size and equal value, land-wise, house-wise. I'm not talking about dollar-wise to do that. So with that being said, if we're going to compare loss on properties, we have to look at what was the upside. How much did the properties go up first before we started having a loss? So properties in that area of, of Ocean Harbor House, which I have lived for forty-nine years, I lived less than a hundred feet from the front door of that building. Okay, my house just appraised in November for almost seven hundred thousand dollars. So with that being said, we have to look at the totality of what the real estate is worth. In the entire area, not just the said maintenance sales. You're looking in sales. You didn't look at the total value. What these people are asking for is will their properties be diminished by putting in this, this facility on, at the church? We have to look at what the properties went up to see what the properties are going to go down. Is the ratio going to continue in upward or is it going to continue in a downward slope?
Well, I did it at a snapshot time. I did it at the end of November or maybe December at twenty-four. Now, if we can go back a minute, you mentioned the house across the street.
Yes.
That was listed for four or something?
Four forty-nine nine.
Listed and getting are two different things.
You're absolutely correct.
So why would I want to look at a listing?
You're absolutely correct, but you didn't look at the house that is at two, uh, I meant two oh five. So they're at, they're at two oh eight, uh, Hamilton, that sold for eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand. I don't see that on here.
If you're in a four hundred, roughly four hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, four or five hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, had to be something special that generated an eight hundred thousand dollar share. Now, I'm not familiar with that house, but if you were pointing out next to a ball field, okay, and four thousand extra square foot in site size, you must have the answer to that question. There's, you're not obligated to give it to me, but you, you can't throw in an eight hundred and then tell me that my comparison.
That's what I just said to you. But you're throwing in housing that's over a mile and a half away on Windsor Avenue.
But that was the intent, to show something closer than something far away.
Slow it up a little bit and one, one speaking at a time for a clean record. We're personally finished. Do you want to go over this slide?
Mr. Gazarovski.
Well, Mr. Gazarovski. Remember, the board has the right to question the, um, the witness. If he can't answer the question, that's okay.
If it absolutely requires a question, this is under the right to testify. If you have to do that, you should be subjected to cross-examination.
I have a question. I'm not going to test. The first one on page, on page ten.
One moment.
One's a buy level, one's a ranch. One's got five bedrooms, one's got three. How is that a fair comparison?
Well, not all properties are match pairs. We're looking for, I can't think of anything closer to a ranch than a buy level. Certainly not a colonial or a three-story house.
Well, let's, let's go to the one on page eight. Four bedrooms, three beds. Three bedrooms, two beds. I mean, that's a big difference in price.
Do you see the, do you see the adjustments to the right of that? That's what, well, that's what, that's what I'm tasked to do.
I don't know how you're comparing apples to apples with numerical adjustments.
Well.
I'm not going to make a statement.
When you don't have a Macintosh to compare to a Macintosh, sometimes you gotta go to pick one out. I need, I'm an apple, but they're apples. They're not multi-family homes.
Before we go any further, in the interest of time, I think it's important that the witness be allowed to complete his testimony before we get into additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good news is I'm down to my third match pair, and this third match pair deals with properties we're talking about now on page twelve, both of which are north of, of Windsor. All right? However, one of them is really close to Harbor. It's point two oh of a mile. And the other one is, um, well, over three tenths of a mile. The one that's more interior in the neighborhood sold for more than the one that was in close proximity. Now, um, I adjusted for time. I adjusted for gross living area. I adjusted nominally for the fact that there's a few extra bedrooms. And at the end of the day, this adjustment was almost twelve percent. All right, so I have three different sales, three different match pairs, all in general proximity to Harbor House. All right? The rates of appreciation were about eleven, twelve, and twenty-two percent. And I would concede, Mr. Tuttela, that I was not aware of that ballpark, that ballpark you mentioned. Yeah, and, and that, I, I think just logic would dictate that that would require a different kind of adjustment. That was my highest percentage difference. So, you know, even if I cut that in half, all right, I concede that point where it's still a ten, eleven, twelve percent diminution of value if you're proximate, whether you're a buy level or a ranch, or you got an extra bedroom or not, we adjust for that. Go back to the original premise. We bring it up for time. We, we count on the fact that one property's got a pool. Do that for room count. This is standard professional practice of all appraisers. We adjust. Now, if the adjustments are excessive and can't be supported by market data, you know, turn them into the stake, what can I say? But I think this is quite defensible. Proximity, I'm not weighing in on inherently beneficial uses. That's way above the honest scope of this assignment. I would just ask that if you're proximate to a shelter, might there be a loss in value? I found three match pairs. They're not perfect match pairs. They're what I call a match pair light, all right, because they're required adjustments. But I think it shows that there is a loss in value. And it also explains why virtually all the other shelters are on busy roadways, Highway Nine throughout the county. Not proximate to residential communities. That includes, that includes my testimony.
Too much, too old for a talk. Really not a pair. Microphone. Mr. York approaching the witching hour. This time I blame it on you. And Ellis, and Melissa.
It's the board discretion. We're not going to finish this witness tonight, obviously, in fifteen minutes.
Well, we wouldn't finish the witness regardless, so if you would like to start.
I'm sorry.
Microphone.
You used Ocean Harbor House as the base of your comparison, correct?
Yes.
What goes on in Ocean Harbor House?
Well, it's a homeless shelter. I think the last thing I read about it was used primarily for, for young men, school age. People at risk.
How many people?
Uh, I can tell you there are eighteen beds. How many people, will they double up or not? I don't know.
If I told you that Ocean Harbor House hasn't been in operation for at least two years, would that be correct?
Ocean Harbor House closed in August of twenty-three. And to Mr. Steck's point, they moved, I believe, to Conover Street right off of Main Street where the services are. My, my point is.
No, 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 that's not what I asked. You said you took a snapshot in time, and your report says, what was your date of valuation? Twenty-four, right?
Yes.
Twenty-five?
November twenty-fourth.
At that time, Ocean Harbor House was a vacant building, wasn't it?
Yes.
So how could it have an impact on the values of the surrounding neighborhood if it wasn't functioning?
Two reasons. Number one, had the ability to still open and operate if it chose to do so. Number two, it, it is clearly a non-conforming use. I'm not talking that with respect to zoning. I'm talking about with respect to market appeal in the neighborhood.
Well, if you go by, does it look like any other house?
No, I think there's some differences. You see a handicap ramp. You see larger parking. You see multiple picnic tables outside. You could see that it was used for something different than a single-family residence.
Was there a sign outside that said Ocean Harbor House, homeless people?
I think there, no, no.
Do you know for a fact that Ocean Harbor House appeared before this board in April of twenty-four and got approval for a change of use?
For which building?
For the Ocean Harbor House building on, on Windsor.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't aware because I told you that there was another facility that they moved.
So when you took your snapshot in November, what was the use of that building as allowed by this board adjustment? If you know.
I, I, I don't know.
So you just did an evaluation of match pairs.
So, you just did an evaluation of match pairs for Ocean Harbor House, for which you have no idea what they were doing there in November of twenty-fourth?
November of twenty-four, it was, it was, um, closed.
And it had an approval on April twenty-fifth, twenty-four, for a different use, a different set of uses granted by this board, but you didn't know that?
No.
So, when you did all the match pairs and all the valuation, you did it for Ocean Harbor House, which I had no clue as to how it was operating?
I, I knew that they moved to another location, correct?
No further questions.
I didn't take fifteen minutes.
Anything to please you.
So we'll take questions from board members, Mr. Illinois.
I happen to, um, live nearby, I'm familiar with this neighborhood, I lived, left it a mile away, on the, on the corner of Barfield and Windsor, which is nearby to Harbor House, and also the pump house, which is actually, it's like a water tower also, but they.
With a facade.
With a facade of a house on it and stuff. On the corner of Barfield and, and Windsor, there's an apartment complex.
Yes.
And, and the fact that there's an apartment complex, would that have an effect on the neighboring values, that maybe apartments aren't, that, you know, lucrative residences?
It might, because it, again, like the Harbor House, it was a non-conforming type of use, all right? I'm not aware near Harbor House, there are the multi-family units, except for the one to the west.
So it could, uh, the apartment complex could have.
It could impact, but I don't think that's the entire impact.
Thank you.
Mr. Romo.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, because of the location of the Harbor House, the Ocean Harbor House, that we did approve for a different use in April. It is near the baseball fields of the World Championship Little League, and have you driven in that neighborhood at all, because it doesn't seem like you're all that familiar with it? Or is this just stuff that you looked up online and got answers for?
Actually, I, we, we looked up.
So you looked up, you looked up your information, you did not.
No, 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 I was down there four or five times.
And you didn't see baseball fields?
I went, I went, uh, from probably no more than a half a mile, probably less.
So my question is, there is a large apartment complex, as was just stated.
I saw it.
A large Little League baseball complex, which has been stated numerous times.
Yes.
But you were unaware that any of that was in that neighborhood when you were asked about?
I was unaware that the one house that was furthest west on Windsor was adjacent to a ball field. I drove up and down Windsor, I started to say.
So you drove up and down Windsor?
And.
And you didn't see the baseball fields? Or the apartment complexes?
Oh, no, but the apartment complex was literally right next door.
To what?
Harbor.
Okay, but again, if you drove up and down Windsor Avenue, you would see the homes there, you would see a large baseball field complex. Um, yeah, on both sides of Windsor Avenue. But where on Windsor Avenue were you that you didn't see any of this when you were out there doing appraisals for houses that aren't similar to each other? That are selling for, and being appraised for numbers that you're not familiar with? It leads me to believe that you are not knowledgeable as to what is going on near that Harbor, Ocean's Harbor House, that you keep speaking of like you know about it. So again, I ask you, when did you drive, where on Windsor Avenue did you drive past? If you actually did.
I started to explain it to you and you interrupted.
No, I didn't interrupt you. You said you didn't see the field, how is my question? If you drove Windsor Avenue from Fisher Boulevard to Garfield Avenue, to the, to Coolidge, you would have seen all of this, but you're unaware of it. So again, I'm gonna ask you, if your information was looked up online, or if you actually took the time to go look in this neighborhood to see what was actually going on over there?
Every property that was considered for analysis in, in Windsor area, all right? You have to let me finish.
I'm listening, I didn't say we're, I'm listening.
Thank you. Every property was picked up off of multiple listing system, the Ocean County Tax Board and Public Record Information. And then, when we finally got down to what appeared to be match pairs, we went and saw each of those properties. And that's when I, I saw the one on Hightown, I saw the one on Garfield, I said every one that I used, free sales on Windsor, and I was probably a quarter to a half a mile west, excuse me, um, east is where I started, turned around, just east of that, um, water facility, and then I drove back, okay? I just don't remember seeing the ball field, I just don't.
Because you didn't go that far. Do you know how long Windsor Avenue is? It runs parallel to Route Thirty-Seven from Fisher Boulevard all the way.
Well, the character of the neighborhood changed after a while, too, and it sounded as if everything was the same. I mean, right across the street, I hear about a listing for eight hundred thousand in a neighborhood that's probably.
Because it's a high-demand area, that's why. People are gonna pay more to live there, we get that. My, my point is, I truly don't believe that you went over there to look and see what was surrounding this neighborhood, which makes it a desirable place in terms of real lives, such as a World Championship Little League baseball field and complex, good schools, and its access to the beach, but you missed a, you missed huge parts of Windsor Avenue and its neighborhood. So I, I don't, I, I'm having a hard time with your testimony right now, because it doesn't seem as though you are familiar with our, with that area of our town. That's all I have to say.
I didn't remember questioning, raising any doubt about the desirability of the neighborhood, the quality of the schools.
People pay for where they want to live these days, there's not a lot of places to live.
I understand, and if you have a choice to be next to or proximate to a shelter, or, I'm now hearing about the benefits of being next to the World Championship Little League field, maybe that's somewhat more desirable.
September eighth, April, that's not true.
Um. I have a quick question, Jason.
Sure.
I'll make it before we get out of here, Ted. Compared the properties, you compared the number, did you go into any of these buildings?
No. You're talking about the, the, the.
Houses.
The match pairs, no.
So you have nothing.
Oh, no, no.
I didn't think you did, so you have no.
No appraiser can.
Hang on, one at a time, one at a time.
Okay, no appraiser can, so, would you say that the value of the home sometimes has to do with a lot of variables that you can't put into your formula, like what the interior looks like?
Yes, but if you look in the addenda, we have multiple listing sheets, we have extensive notes on the sheets, we spoke to brokers who listed or sold the property.
To the brokers that actually sold these homes?
Yeah, or listed them. And that's part of the verification process that I'm required to do.
Big difference when you're going home.
You know, and unless you've had the good fortune of saying, well, I was in that house three weeks ago because I know the people, that's always an inherent risk of appraisal.
So there's a lot of variables in your appraisal.
I just try to minimize those variables to get.
There's still a lot of variables, thank you.
Okay, uh, with that, I think we're going over to the board secretary to find a, um, next meeting.
I have availability for the next meeting on March twenty-seventh.
Okay, since Sir Gazarovski is not available.
My comment was I had a scheduled hearing.
So you're unavailable?
Available in detention.
So you're unavailable?
April tenth or April twenty-fourth?
I would ask April tenth, because I won't be available April twenty-fourth.
Neither am I.
You, you're not coming with me?
I can.
Well, that's Easter baseball, yeah.
April tenth.
That's actually right.
Is April tenth okay?
I'll confirm tomorrow morning, I'll confirm both things.
Well, we need to know, because we need to announce it to the, to the public when it's getting carried here.
Give me the date of the impound.
April tenth. I have a couple of applications I've scheduled for that date.
Mr. Steck, are you available on April the tenth? Yes, you.
I thought we were finished, Mr. Steck.
Mr. Steck, no.
Wait, don't let Mr. Steck.
Yeah, but he may be further across examiner, or called back to redirect him.
You have, hold on, you already had your chance to do redirect for Mr. Steck, he's done.
All, all we're doing now is.
We first determine whether he's, are you available?
Excuse me, excuse me one second, excuse me one second. I think the only thing that is left to do here is questions for, uh, public statements, closing arguments, and a vote.
And question, the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other questions?
Oh, yeah, excuse me, yes, yes. Public questions of this witness, public comment, closing arguments.
Uh, and professionals, all professionals.
And professionals.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I appreciate the fact that Ron's not available at the next meeting, it happens. The following meeting is April tenth, I would be, I ask that it be scheduled for that night. The applicant has a certain right to be heard, I'll give Mr. Gazarovski the courtesy of not pushing March twenty-seventh, but I would ask that it be heard on April.
As you said, if we have representation, the board does no further questions of Mr. Steck.
I do not have questions, Mr. Steck. The public had the opportunities to question.
Question Mr. Steck already.
He's done.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Steck.
The board was done.
We're past Mr. Steck.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, so the meeting is being carried to the, um, first meeting of April, April tenth, um, at six-thirty. This is the only notice that the members of the public will be given, um, so, April tenth, two thousand twenty-five, six-thirty. Any other business before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second, all in favor?